Good morning. Be calling this special meeting for May twenty first, twenty twenty four to order. If you could please join me for the pledge of allegiance and salute to the state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which justice is just as far.
Salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the state of civil and friendship among the United States. Thank you. Moving on to, uh, next item, which is going to be approval of the special meeting agenda. It's a motion by Commissioner Edwards, and a second by Commissioner Brown. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Public input, do we have anyone for public input? Okay, anyone for public input? Alright, thank you. Moving on to new business. Under item A, it's going to be consideration of Grant County Courthouse project submitted by Sixth Judicial District Court. Mr. Hernandez.
Good morning Chairman and members of the board. Uh, this is a tabled item from last meeting. This is, uh, to, uh, ask for your consideration for a project for the courthouse funding that's been made available by the Administrative Office of the Courts. Just to recap, the Administrative Office of the Courts, um, has, was appropriated ten million dollars to plan, design, construct, renovate and furnish and equip district court improvements statewide, contingent upon the county match of at least fifty percent of project costs. Uh, at this point, um, the county's recommendation would be for planning and design of the courthouse project. Last discussions we had was if, if it's the wish of the commission to do a plan and design, we would ask the architect to plan and design both, um, a courthouse renovation in addition, as well as the new, uh, facility. And at that point, we can have, uh, a great, a better idea of the cost for both. Uh, and at that point, down the road, uh, for the next funding cycle, uh, we can approach you all for, uh, and work with the district court to submit a funding application for whichever, whichever alternative is preferred.
Good, thank you. Yes ma'am.
Where's the fifty percent match going to come from?
So the fifty percent match for, um, just the planning and design is something that we can budget for with general funds, or if you chose to use the, um, LETCF funds, you could use that as well, but we, um, we have county funds that we could, um, um, appropriate the fifty percent for the planning and design portion.
If I remember our discussion last time, um, I believe it was your preference to use LETCF, am I correct?
It was, um, but after discovering a few things, trying to, uh, put together your preliminary budget, I'm not sure that that's necessary to go that route either. So I, I'm confident that we have the money to be able to come up with the fifty percent for planning and design. Um, now coming up with fifty percent of construction of either is going to be a challenge, and I know you weren't here, but that was part of the discussion we had is, um, at this point, if we were able to, to have the planning and design a hundred percent complete, then you have an actual shovel-ready project moving forward.
Which opens, excuse me, opens the door to a lot of other potential funding sources since it's shovel-ready. Sorry, I'm just trying to get caught up for a discussion I wasn't present for.
I just want to clarify that, uh, you don't need us to specify in our motion the source of the funding, correct?
I don't believe that's necessary unless, I, I would just, maybe your motion should state that it would be county funds, I mean, just to clarify, I mean, we have to come up with county funds, but we have it.
Can you make a motion?
No, not till we get to, uh,
Oh, right, we're discussing our-
Mr. Chairman, um, Chief Judge Hofackett is here, and I, I think he might have a few comments as well, if he was able to speak.
Um, before, um, he gets started, I did have one other clarifying question. If I'm not mistaken, this, um, this drawing in here, this, uh, the two drawings that are in here are the same ones that we saw originally that there were questions about access, is that correct?
So the, the drawings that we have are a result of the needs assessment that the architect provided for us.
Okay, so we've seen these before, and we've had some conversation around access.
Yes ma'am.
Perfect, thank you.
Judge, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, thank you for letting me speak. Just wanted a couple of things to highlight regarding the request. Uh, there's a ten million dollar cap that judiciary has that is going to be split amongst everybody that applies. So I don't want to, I don't want to leave the impression that it's a guarantee that the judiciary has that fifty percent. Um, but the county needs to be able to commit up to fifty percent of the project to be eligible to apply, and certainly, uh, myself and Ms. Webb will advocate very strongly and try to get to the top of the list, and I also recommend, uh, the proposal has current project, which would be this, this study or the, the architectural design, and then in, let them know very plainly that in the future, we will be applying, uh, for additional funds for the shovel-ready project, uh, because it talks about how that will have the judiciary go to the legislature and make sure that it, uh, I mean, last cycle, there was twenty million dollars, and this cycle, there's only ten, to let them go to the legislature and say, look, if these are the projects, uh, and maybe we can get more on the judiciary side, so there'll be more to match, uh, so I would recommend, uh, anything that we do, talk about the two steps. I ha- if you have any questions, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to answer, but I just wanted to clarify those two things.
Alright, I really appreciate that clarification, because that puts a little different light on what we're talking about. Not that I think we shouldn't go ahead with the planning and design, but once we had that done, then, um, if, let's just say for the sake of the discussion, that the project, whatever it is, is going to be twenty million dollars. Then we are obligated as a county to provide ten million of that. If the legislature only approaches, appropriates five million of that, then are we free to find other sources for that five million, or are we then on the hook for more than fifty percent? I would hope we could just go find some other source for the balance of those funds.
I, uh, there's certainly nothing in our funding, uh, proposal, or, uh, what we are doing that would prevent the county from, from doing that, that, uh, I don't want to say this for sure, but I think, I don't know what other kind of funding sources you're talking about, but it would be the county using their resources to get other, uh, funding sources, which I think would also be acceptable for even up to the fifty percent. I don't think the judiciary is trying to tie the county's hands on how you fund your half, uh, and that could be from other sources as well, just that the county has to use their resources and their, their wherewithal and their connections to get, uh, to commit, I, I think the idea is just that that the judiciary wants to assist the county, but not replace the county funding, so the county has always had the ability to fund projects in, in many different ways, and this is not to limit that, I don't, I don't think at all. And I, I do want to emphasize that the Supreme Court has laid out their budget priorities, a- and security i- is one of them, and so I think including the design for the new building covers, covers security and will give us a lot more, uh, a lot more to stand on when trying to persuade the Budget Committee and ultimately the Supreme Court that our project meets their budget priorities and, and should be funded, uh, to the highest potential.
Commissioner Brown?
Uh, I think my answer to that question, at least, is that we wouldn't move forward until the AOC had its fifty percent. I, I don't see the county going over what it's legally required to pay, it's such a big project.
Well, I guess that's really, that would be what I would think, so we wouldn't go forward. Because we're legally obligated to fifty percent of that. If the courts really want to do this, then they need to come up with their share.
I do, I do have, I do have to clear this up. I, this is worded in an uncomfortable way, it's worded both different ways. The judiciary will fund up to fifty percent, um, and the county, of course, is up to fifty percent, but it's, uh, I, I don't know how successful our, our request will be i- if the county is unwilling to do sixty percent, if, if we have a twenty million dollar project, which I think is a high number, but if we have a twenty million dollar project and the judiciary funds five million or seven million, then it's a, it's a fifteen million dollar project, a thirteen million dollar project, and if the county would then either impliedly or expressly tell the judiciary, if you don't have fifty percent of this, we're not going forward, I, I don't know how we would, I don't know how we would ever be successful, because this year, there's only ten million total for the entire state, every judicial district in the state. And, and there's, there's not a process, I don't think, for them to allocate one hundred percent of that funding to a single county. It i- it is a, it is a help, and up to fifty percent, and we will fight for every dollar that we can, but I, I, I cannot, I cannot mislead anybody here to, to say that the judiciary will fund fifty percent if, if the county will fund fifty percent. All, all we can do is go ask for our piece of that pie, and in the future, in twenty twenty six, fiscal twenty twenty six, hopefully that pie is bigger, so that we can get a bigger chunk of it. I think getting a good chunk of the, the planning money, I think, is, is, is a real possibility. But on a twenty million dollar project, uh, Grant County's courthouse would take one hundred percent of the funds that are available for the entire state. And I don't, I don't see the Supreme Court or the Budget Committee declaring our project the only project that goes forward in the state under those circumstances, and so we would, we'd have to be able to fund, uh, the rest of the courthouse some other way, uh, where I don't know that we even get off the ground.
So I, I appreciate that clarification, but I think, um, the other side of that is, I assume that the judiciary gets their budget from the legislature?
Yes.
And so I think it's incumbent upon the legislature to appropriate that money. And, um, uh, it's clear that you and I aren't going to be working on that. Um, but I also think that the legislature has a history of pushing costs like that onto counties that can, uh, are, are sacrificing other projects in order to do that, and so I think the the conversation is really about how the legislature views the priorities, not the judiciary or the county. I think the judiciary and the county are in agreement on the priority. I think our job is to ensure that the legislature is on board with that.
And I would only say that this funding is maybe two years old, uh, up until two years ago, courthouses were one hundred percent the responsibility of counties, and, and have been since the Constitution was, was drafted.
That doesn't make the county, it any easier for the county with limited revenue sources to provide those services, which is probably at least partly why the courthouse is far, far behind on its updates.
Anything else, Commissioners?
Okay.
Thank you.
I do have one other question.
Okay, I was gonna, thank you Judge, but maybe not.
Well, we'll see.
Go ahead.
Our manager might be able to answer it. Do the, do the judicial districts, um, complete ICIPs and apply for capital outlay from the legislature? Is that a, another source? Sorry to bring you back up.
No, no, not a problem, uh, we, we do. Um, I, it's never been done, as far as I know, for district courthouses because of the, the statute of who, who funds them. I, it, it's very difficult, I, I think, I'm sure you all know better than I do, uh, for one branch of the government to lobby for and pay for an obligation of another branch of the government. It's, uh, I think this is a novel approach that bec- happened because of a different county that had, uh, longstanding, uh, dispute between the local court and the county, which I, we don't have here, and I don't anticipate. And so the legislature came up with a funding source to help resolve that, and, and trying to go forward and, and help counties, because they, I think they understand very clearly that it's a, it's kind of an unfunded mandate, and maybe, maybe more than just kind of.
Thank you Judge, I really appreciate your background.
You know, one thing, last year, was it last year? When I was in Santa Fe, I was a little taken back because, you know, I s- I had spoken to one of the judges, and they told me, well, we're up here trying to get funding and advocating for money for the courthouse, well, I had to take a step back, because nobody had approached us to help advocate for it. And when you're talking about a county-owned building, you know, it'd probably be good that if you guys do have an ICIP with us, that you let us know, that way we can all join together, instead of sitting there in the middle of a bunch of people where we're advocating for our ICIP. We also support, you know, Baird, Hurley, Santa Clara, all these other communities, and then when somebody says, oh, we're over here advocating for our courthouse, well, good, it, it would have been great for us to know, because we could have joined forces, not just taking it on your own. Um, so just food for thought, you know, in the, in, you know, the coming legislative session or whatever. It'd be good, at least if the Commissioners or County Manager knew what you guys were taking up there, because we do also talk to our representatives and, and senators to help us with some of the funding.
Yeah, I, I apologize if that happened, I, I was unaware. That, I, I assume, or I hope it was for magistrate courthouse, the magistrate courthouse in Grant County?
I'm not sure what it was, but-
Because, because I'm, I'm certainly unaware, and I absolutely, we have good legislators here, and I absolutely would anticipate a joint effort i- if, if this project goes forward, speaking to them about, about him.
Mr. Chair, the conversation was with regard to the needs assessment feasibility study for Grant County courthouse, that's what, um, then Chief Judge Delaney and, and I approached you about.
So you know, i- i- it helps us if we're all on the same page, more we have, you know, uh, I've learned that sometimes you don't knock on their doors, you just walk in and sit down. Uh, but you know, if, if we can all know where we're, where we're at, we can all help each other advocating for some of this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
So, uh, I just want to thank, thank you Judge Hofackett, uh, for being here today, because, um, these are good, I think this is a good discussion, and we need to be really clear on how we're going to go forward, so thanks for the background.
Thank you. Also, before I forget, when we get to the preliminary budget, if you can just refresh so it shows up, because I had a little trouble.
Yeah, it didn't show up at my house this morning even.
Yeah, just refresh it and we can-
Here it is.
Um, so this was just discussion, correct?
Yes, sir, the actions later, um, of the resolution- For the submission of the application.
Thank you. Do we have any, anything else in this discussion? Okay, moving on to resolutions, consideration of Resolution R dash twenty-four dash twenty-three, uh, budget adjustment request.
Were we gonna skip the financial report?
Hmm? Do what?
I'm happy to skip over the budget.
The, uh, section six.
Financial reports, consideration of the preliminary budget.
I can talk about that during the, um, it's on here twice, actually, so the resolution, R twenty-four twenty-four is the preliminary budget, I can discuss it then.
Okay, so let's go to CND, I guess. Consideration of Resolution R dash twenty-four dash twenty-four, preliminary budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Commissioners, um, this is a bar to increase two of the agreements we received for the economic outdoor marketing grant for thirty thousand dollars, and we also received fifty thousand dollars for cybersecurity for the elections, so this is a bar to, to increase these amounts onto the budget.
So I think for the record, the record should just show that the Chair, um, called up R twenty-four dash twenty-four, and that uh, the deputy county manager is talking about R twenty-four dash twenty-three. That's where we're at. I think we're all confused.
I, I have no idea, I'm just reading what I have in front of me.
Let him have approval, I can see Resolution R dash twenty-four dash twenty-three, the budget adjustment request that you guys just presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion by Commissioner Brown and second by Commissioner Edwards, and discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So now we're gonna go to twenty-four twenty-four, okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, so last week, I sent you a rough draft of the preliminary budget, which is what is, uh, in front of you today. Um, what I utilized was a recap sheet that we've utilized in the past, um. The projected cash balances, um, and I'm just going to talk about the three major funds today. Um, the projected cash balances were based upon year-to-date expenditures and revenue as of May fifteenth. Um, if we look at the general fund, uh, we're showing, um, a projected, it's not really projected, but as of the middle, uh, uh, May, a cash balance of seven million, three hundred forty-seven thousand, six hundred thirty-four dollars, ninety-one cents. Um, current investments, which are not included in the ending cash balance that Patrick provided me, are eighteen million, five hundred seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars. We have projected transfers out of four million, five hundred twenty-five thousand, four hundred forty-six dollars and forty-two cents. Projected revenue of eighteen million, nine hundred seventy-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars. Budgeted expenses of thirteen million, four hundred eighty-one thousand, five hundred six dollars and eighteen cents, with an estimated ending cash balance of eight million, three hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollars and thirty cents. We have a required reserves of three million, three hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-five cents, with an adjusted ending cash balance of four million, nine hundred forty-two dollars, or four million, nine hundred forty-two thousand, four hundred seventy-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Um, also that, um, so you can see, um, we provided you a detailed budget listing that's at your desk this morning. Um, what we did, um, for the general fund, um, road fund and corrections, we took, uh, the presentation that you heard from department heads, um, and elected officials. The changes we made, uh, were moving all of the capital outlay requests into the LT, LETCF fund, so that there wasn't an impact to those, uh, three major funds. There were some other minor adjustments that were based upon actual expenditures and actual revenues, um. And so that, those projections were made, made on the year-to-date activity. There were some of those that I found a bit off, so we made those adjustments, otherwise it is the budget that was presented to you, um, last month. This, um, doesn't reflect, so what I sent you doesn't reflect any of the grants, so that was a bit of a challenge, um, based upon our current account schema, um, how it does not align with LGBMS. And we have several fund balances that we're carrying forward, um, for many, many years, so sorting through that, um, what I've done is, um, what was sent to you yesterday, um, we have compiled all of the active grants with the current balances that will roll over to fiscal year twenty-five. Those are, um, compiled according to LGBMS, um, so you will see that intergovernmental grants are together, senior citizens, um, legislative appropriations, road and streets, that sort of thing. So you can see that we are able to move forward with what we feel very strongly to be current grants, um, and current, um, balances that need to roll forward, um, in the preliminary budget. Um, any questions on the general fund?
Just on the general fund?
Mm-hmm. I know this is a bit different than you've seen before, but-
Yeah, and I definitely want to, uh, you not to have the impression that I'm trying to make things harder, you know, this is an incredibly difficult situation going on. Um, I suppose I was a little surprised by the level of the adjusted ending cash compared to the required reserves, that's, I don't think I've seen such a large, I'm gonna say, excess. Um, are you thinking in the final budget, that will be largely budgeted?
So I think that you'll see an adjustment, um, a little bit lower in the final budget, because this doesn't reflect a hundred percent of the transfers, I've estimated the transfers in for NMFA loans, um, those, that, I don't have the, I didn't have a chance to go through all the statements, so I used, um, the information that I had from last year. So, um, this is very preliminary, and note that, um, we did a huge chunk of the work now, so that moving into the final budget, there are the things that we have to work on, are actual beginning cash balances. Um, we will have the transfers nailed down to match all of the transfers into those NMFA loans that, um, are required, those were purely estimated based on last year. So I, and then we will have, of course, as explained, the revenue and the expenses, whereas, um, as of May fifteenth, so I didn't project those out, so it's going to be a little bit lower, um, than, but yeah, I know, it looks pretty significant at this point, but there are several more adjustments that we need to make moving into the final budget. If that makes sense.
It does make sense, uh, I, I think one concern I have is, sometimes we end up, July twenty-five, or whatever the date happens to be, with no time to consider an alternative. And, um, if it's possible to get a better sense of what we have left, or what's likely to be left after required reserves are met, uh, in late June or early July, that would be really preferable.
And, and we will continue to update you on that as we move along. Um, another thing that might make, um, a huge difference as well, um, one of the other things I discovered, um, some of you will probably remember the GRT restructure back in twenty nineteen, that was, um, Jason Harper's bill, um, which freed up several increments of GRT. The best way I can explain it is we had a bunch of little buckets of GRT, we got to put those into two big buckets that were for general purposes. Um, so at that, we should have made this adjustment, that we took all of our little buckets of GRT and dumped them into our big bucket, um, that has not happened. Um, so we are still allocating, so one of the ones that, um, was quite uh, difficult to explain was the fire excise tax, that was one of them, um, so the other one is environmental GRT, went away, goes into general fund. Um, also the increment for indigent, so that gives you the flexibility to use those dollars, um, for general purposes. And so all we're required to do is utilize what we need for environmental purposes, whatever that may be, in our case, it's the, um, solid waste. Um, for indigent, you're only required to transfer in what you need to, um, for your indigent, um, your county healthcare claim obligations, which frees up more of your GRT to be utilized for general fund purposes. Um, we did not make those adjustments, so that'll be something that I hope to have done, um, in the final budget, but, um, our account schema is so long and cumbersome, and doesn't match LGBMS, it does this rather than coming straight across, so that's what we're working, and it'll, it will require some work with probably, um, an external auditor, as well as, um, DFA, and also Tyler, to make sure that we align our account schema with our LGBMS, and then whenever you guys look at this, it's very clear, straightforward. So, um, under normal circumstances, yes, I would say that ending cash is probably going to change, but if we actually move those, and I don't know whether or not to move those now, or start moving those in fiscal year twenty-five where they belong, so, um, it could affect what your ending cash balance looks like, um, with that said.
When you put all the little buckets in the big bucket.
Now, it would be my intent, um, to continue to just account for those internally, just so we know, like, you know, what these are generating, just, just because I think it's good practice to know, but, um, they're not required to go into those funds as of, they were, they were freed up to be able to give us that flexibility, and we've not been, um, using that flexibility at a hundred percent. So. So that may be, that may look completely different than what you're accustomed to when we get to that point.
Yeah.
It's been a challenge.
Good.
So, one of the questions we, that I get asked on is detention center. So detention center budget right now, it's gonna be a little over four point one, four point one million?
Yes, so if you wanna, we can scroll down to, um, it's from four, uh, four sixty is correction, um. Right now, we're showing a projected beginning cash of a hundred sixty-four thousand, seven hundred ten dollars and seventy-eight cents, which that most likely we would zero that out, um, because we transfer funds in, there's not really a reason to have a, um, beginning cash balance. So we're projecting, um, transfers in from the general fund of two million, six hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars, twenty-two cents. Um, budgeted revenue, um, is one million, two hundred seventy-three thousand, one hundred dollars, um, with budgeted expenses of four million, one hundred thirty-seven thousand, one hundred seventy-five dollars.
Okay.
And that's leaving, um, a zero, um, ending cash balance, which we're not required to carry, um, any amount of reserves or corrections.
Okay, thank you.
Clarifying question. So I'm looking at the, at what you sent yesterday on the grants, and I'm looking at it on my phone, which is a little problematic. Um, but it's a four-page document, and I'm only showing data on two of those four pages. Is that correct?
I, when I converted it to a P D F from, um, Excel, it added two blank pages for whatever reason.
All right, just wanna make sure I was looking at everything that was supposed to be.
Yeah, there's only actually two pages.
Okay.
So we can move back up to Fund four oh two, which is the road fund. Projected, uh, beginning cash balance of thirty-three thousand, eight hundred eighteen dollars, thirty-three cents. Transfers in from the general fund of nine hundred eighty-six thousand, one hundred one dollar. Budgeted revenue of one million, forty-five thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars, budgeted expenses of one million, nine hundred six thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars, leaving, um, required reserves, which is one twelfth of, um, which would be a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred five dollars and thirty-three cents. Um, and that is wrong.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's...
That is the one that I didn't catch from, um, the previous spreadsheet. So we would end up with, let me fix it really quick.
Zero.
It would be zero.
That one's easy.
So I'll correct that. But you're only required to have that, um, required amount of reserves in your road fund. And since we're transferring in from the general fund, I don't think it's necessary to transfer any more funds than, than is necessary, just as long as you need that.
You would never carry a forward balance, right?
Right. Sorry about that, I didn't catch that one.
It'll be nice, have an extra form on it.
No kidding? It's like, ooh, happy dance.
So I know this is a completely unorthodox way of looking at your budget, but, um, the, the summary sheet of all of the funds we fill is, um, is accurate as looking at the snapshot as of May. And then, like I said, we still have, um, quite a bit of work to do between now and then, but, um, I, I think it's minor in comparison to the work to get to this point. And really removing a lot of those accounts that were carrying over balances that weren't necessary, um, really cleaned up things and made it a little bit easier to look at, um, so.
Are you going through more or are you doing questions?
I'm ready for questions.
Yeah?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, um, the fire departments, uh, I'm, I'm guessing that putting these balances in there is sort of an F Y I for folks, to reassure them, but we're, we're not doing it this way anymore, right?
Well, I don't know yet. So, um, what I did, um, that was, that one was a bit interesting to look at as well. Um, what I did is I put, um, what this budget reflects is putting the, the money back, that's the two million, and putting that back. Um, what you see there in the red, so what we had was state forestry monies and other monies that were going into the state fire. I prefer that state fire is allocated separately because those funds have to be spent accordingly, and so we had, um, state forestry monies in that particular, in those funds. I don't believe that's the way it should be. So what I've done is I've split out, um, you'll see all the fire departments and they'll say state forestry. So whenever they get state forestry reimbursements or any other type of reimbursements, that goes in what we would call the county fire fund, and then we would have a department for each particular, um, fire department. Uh, I carried forward that, um, two points, it's roughly two point six to two point seven million dollar, um, fund balance that was in there before, and then we can hold that in that particular fund, so that whenever they need matching funds for grants, they have emergencies or, um, we have a couple of new fire chiefs who are working really, really hard at trying to bring their departments up to par, um, so they're needing, you know, various equipments, um, there's also some apparatus that needs to be replaced. So then we have that flexibility, um, so that we can allocate those on an as-needed basis.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then you will see below that, um, I broke out the state fire and that shows, um, and I utilized the information that was submitted in their applications that were submitted to the state fire marshal's office. And so that shows their projected rollover balances, um, their anticipated allotments that they will receive, as well as just, um, very rough budgeted expenses. Um, those will be obviously subject to change as well, but those are based upon their state fire allotment. So what I'm gonna do is we're gonna break those out separately, so they're accounted for, where we have local funds in one fund and, um, state funds in another.
Local being forestry.
Local is under the title county, and then state fire, that would be the state fire marshal allotments, or any state fire grants, fire council grants that they get, that would be, I wanna keep all of state funding together, local funding in a different fund.
Makes sense.
So, I guess this maybe is just a coincidence. If I add up the adjusted ending cash from Funds four oh seven through four fourteen, the V F Ds, it sure looks like it's right around two point seven million, which kind of is why I was confused. So this is not a breakout of that consolidated amount above? This just happens to be almost the same amount?
That's what I found in input.
Okay.
I will leave it at that.
Okay. All right, thanks. Um, I probably don't understand L A T C F nearly well enough. Uh, you mentioned you put capital outlay balances in there.
Yes, if you look under the budgeted expenses line, there is, uh, one point eight seven million in the budget expense line.
Yep, yep.
That would be all of the capital that was requested during, um, your budget workshop. So I shifted all of that into L A T C F. I think some of that can be whittled down, um, I think there is maybe a few more wants rather than needs, um, but we can take a look at that between now and final. That was what I shifted out, um, into that fund.
Okay, and, and the way that fund works, do we transfer out to other funds? This isn't one, I mean, 'cause I see a transfer out of five seventy or so, five sixty.
So, um, looking back at the last fiscal year, we did some of both, and I'm, I can't, I can't tell you why. It would be my preference that we not transfer out of that fund, that we would budget within that fund of what we wanted to do, so there's no transfers out of it.
Okay.
So that's my intention, to have no transfers out of that, and simply budget what we want to pay for out of that, and so then for tracking purposes, we can go back and see exactly
Thank you.
what we spent out of that.
Makes more sense to me.
Good answer. And the opioid settlement money, that's waiting for us to make a decision?
Yes, and so I did not budget any of that, um, and we'll need to have a conversation around that, um, sometime in the near future of, um, what we wanna do with that. I think, um, we'll have a couple options to present to you, hopefully, um, well after the fiscal year starts, but...
So maybe late summer?
That's it for me, Mr. Chair.
You know, this, Sheriff, I guess is a question for you on your biennial training. Where, where, where have we had in, in this year? Are we at the end of the two years, or are we just starting two years, or?
So last year we completed, Mr. Chairman, the question, last year we completed our two-year, we're starting the new two-year process. But the way we've been utilizing our biennial training has been through online, which has been a big help to us to be able to get all staffing, um, scheduled for, not have to send people out. Um, my focus is on anything that needs to be done is to bring the trainer here to Silver City and help get all, uh, law enforcement trained with the biennial. So that's, that's been our, our goal, um, but like I say, that online has really, really helped us last year to save on, on costs.
Okay, no, thank you, 'cause I'm looking at some of the, the training monies that have been budgeted, and it didn't seem like it could cover some of that, but if we're just starting the, the two-year period this fiscal year, we're okay.
Right, and unfortunately with, um, as you all were, the L E P F funding that has been provided within, started, that started last year, the, the increase was raised per, uh, agency. So that has helped in, me in, in budgeting more training, to be able to use that L E P F funding for training. So I use that very wisely, um, to help, um, save on the county budget.
That's L E P F law enforcement protection?
That's correct, is sir.
It's Fund four oh five.
Huh?
It's Fund four oh five on your sheet there.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioners?
Well, I realize that there's been a lot of heartache that's gone into this, but it's so much easier to read. So there's a silver lining, I guess.
Okay, anything else?
I think we're looking for a motion, is that right?
Yes, sir.
I can make a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-four twenty-four, the preliminary budget for next fiscal year.
I'll second. So a motion by Commissioner Brown and a second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carries. Moving on to Item E, consideration of Resolution R dash twenty-four dash twenty-five, authorizing the submission of an application to New Mexico Administrative Office of Courts for Grant County Courthouse Project.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve R twenty-four dash twenty-five.
Does this resolution specify both projects?
Does.
So the application that is submitted with it, so this is a resolution authorizing the submission of the application, the application will, um, reflect both.
Beautiful.
I'll second.
Okay. So I have a motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Uh, moving on to Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Brown.
Caught me by surprise.
Okay, Commissioner Medina. I'll go back to you. Commissioner Medina?
Yeah, just a couple things. Um, I was in contact with the Jessica Swat from the four H. I've been following up on some of the projects she's been showing up, so I went out to spend the afternoon at their shooting program, and those kids are amazing. I sat out there with them for an hour and watched them shoot their twenty-twos and, um, got to talk, chance to talk to their coaches and, and those kids are really committed to that little program. They were very attentive and they listened and they had a real good fun, and they make it really exciting for me. I was really excited to be out there. Um, I think they were kinda shocked to see me out there when I showed up, but, um, I'm gonna tell Jessica, thank you very much for her commitment to the four H program and and what she's doing for these kids. Um, on top of that, June twelfth is my next meeting in Mimbres. At eleven thirty, I'll be taking Jessica with me, as well as the new county fire chief, to discuss fire safety operations and so forth. We'll be meeting out at the, uh, Senior Center, June twelfth at eleven thirty. Invite all, all the community to attend and ask questions and so forth, and that's all I have. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Go ahead.
Did you say eleven thirty?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Edwards?
Uh, nothing for me, thank you.
Do you want me to go, or?
No, I, I think the one thing that was in my head, I was just gonna congratulate the schools on their successful graduation weekend, at least from my perspective. Well, and the Silver City Museum on, uh, successful second burlesque baseball. Sheriff was a, an ace out there for the gordos. And claro que ganaron los gordos porque son los mejores. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. You know, I just have one, in, in it, I guess it's comment for, for county manager. I know you're real busy right now, so, um, I did receive an email, I'm not sure, sometime over the weekend, I guess, um, with the wildlife services contract. Some of the money that hasn't been spent, is there any room in the contract or in the contract to be able to use some of those unused hours or monies and, and maybe talking to Mr. Farado, you know, to use some of that to go into public education? Because I think that, that was a very good idea. I think that, that's what we're lacking here sometimes, is a public education on some of this. And I know that, and I haven't really looked at it, but, uh, there were some, some hours that weren't spent. So I'm not asking you to answer that right now, but maybe in the future, looking at that, and if we're not hitting the full hours, maybe we can, or wildlife services can look at that to educate some of the public on some of the stuff.
Um, I can personally answer that. I need to, I will go back and look at the statute. So we fund the majority of this through, um, tailored grazing fees, and the statute is very specific about what you can utilize those, um, fees for. So that's the bulk of where the money comes from, um, and you'll note on there, for whatever reason, we've been carrying forward a, a balance there as well. I don't think that's necessary. We should only be transferring in the amount, um, that we're short of, uh, tailored grazing fees to fund, um, fund that program. I think we allocate those funds and we entered into the agreement, so I think that's a conversation you'll have to have with Mr. Farado about how they choose, um, because we're paying for, um, the wildlife services portion, and so we don't really have a lot of flexibility around, um, how those dollars are used.
Thank you.
And, um, it, and I'm not sure that I agree with Mr. Griffin's assessment that the full hours are not being utilized. Um, I, I mean, they're, they have their budget, um, being, I'll get into that, but I'm, I'm not sure I agree with his assessment of where the hours are and how it's being allocated. But I'll, I'll, I'll follow up and give you a complete answer after I go back and refresh my memory of exactly what that statute says.
And I need to go back also and look at the contract a little further and, and the report on the hours, but, you know, I thought if there is something there, uh, that's left, that, that may be one, one way to communicate to the public, so. Anyway, I think that's it. Commissioner?
Clarifying question on that. Um, in terms of the hours left over, uh, that person is a salary position, correct?
I can't answer that. I, I don't know the particulars of Mr. Jones, and they also use Mr. Pierce occasionally, um, I, I can't. That's a question for Mr. Farado.
I would assume that that's a salary position that... Anyway, okay, thanks.
Thank you, county manager. Anything else, Commissioners? All right, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.